Five of the U.S. Constitution for the specific purpose, three specific purposes, to impose fiscal restraints on the federal government, limit the power and jurisdiction of the federal government, and limit the terms of office for its officials and for members of Congress. Resolution also provides a procedure for appointing commissioners to represent the state at said constitutional convention. I had put this bill in at the request of one of my constituents who, through the chair, I'd like to have him come up, Ross Meyer, the first speaker tonight. I was pleasantly surprised to see the number of emails I received. I don't know if my colleagues have, but the number of emails that I received requesting passage of this. So Ross, I will turn it over to you because you know this inside and out and better than I do. So you have the floor.
Thank you. Rep. Breen, did you want to say anything or want to pass? Not to put you on the spot.
Sure.
Thank you, and thank you, Representative Corvacey, for being, introducing this legislation. I agree, the correspondence I've gotten on this has been very substantial. It's my understanding this is the second iteration of the legislation, correct?
Yes. Yes, this is the second iteration. I pulled the first one after a meeting where this is more probably identical, similar or identical to resolutions in other states. And it does two things. It requests a resolution and also provides a procedure for appointing the commissioners. So there's no confusion about the intent. So that's why I put this bill in, that's why my name was the only one on it, because I did not get a chance to ask some of my colleagues to put the vote, the bill in. I guess Representative Breen, you would have liked to co-sponsor this bill?
That is correct. With your permission, the chair, I'd like to have my name added to the legislation.
That would be fine with me, but it's got to be done before the bill is heard.
I guess we're going to have to wait until next year.
I'll sign it now. And I just want to add, I fully support this legislation. Someone who has advocated in the past for limited government, free markets, federalism, and term limits, I think that this is a great piece of legislation to get there. The amount of support for this legislation has been fantastic, and I think it really goes to show that people do want good government and they want to be able to really control their own destiny. And so I support this 100%.
Mr. Moore, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Ross Maher of District 55, and Representative Corvacey is my representative. I am a proponent of passing this resolution, calling for a convention of the states for the purposes of developing proposals for ratification as amendments to the U.S. Constitution. As stated, there are three topical areas that Rep. Corvacey just mentioned, and as so, the convention is so limited to reducing the size and scope of the federal government imposing fiscal restraints on the federal government and imposing term limits on our federal officials to include members of Congress. And this year, we've taken somewhat of a different path, as Rep. Corvacey alluded to, and we've really combined two resolutions into one. The first part being the portion which calls for the convention and cites the limited topical areas, and the second lays out more procedures as to how our state would select its commissioners, starts to place initial limitations on them and prevents them from going beyond their scope while attending the convention, as well as addresses some recall procedures as well for attempts to go beyond their commission. So from this point, I'm briefly just going to focus on the concerns or some of the more common concerns that we see from our opponents for calling the Convention of States. First and foremost is the infamous runaway convention. Frankly, this is historically inaccurate. There's no such thing. There has never been a runaway convention, and it's another myth. The founders that attended the Philadelphia Convention, excuse me, commonly cited as the example of the runaway convention, had written commissions from their states allowing them to address the needs and exigencies of the Union, the inadequacies of the Articles of Confederation, and they did so without restriction. Further, had the delegates gone beyond their authority, beyond their commission, the resulting constitution would have failed the ratification process, which obviously it has not. Our opponents also cite the resulting constitutional chaos. This is impossible because we seek to use the constitutional methods for making amendments, and these are the same procedures that every amendment that we cherish today have adhered to. So how is this constitutional chaos? And since Congress has, or repeatedly fails to restrain itself, the states are the only remaining option. And to quote my friend, Mr. Marion, "If you don't like the regulation, change it." The irony, the self-licking ice cream cone in all this, the circular argument is, is you then have to use Article V in order to be able to change Article V. With that, often people ask what how, or they throw their arms up and they scream and hoot and holler as to how a convention would run. And frankly, the convention would run like other, every other legislative process throughout this nation, with the processes that the commissioners are familiar with, as laid out in Mason's Manual of Legislative Procedures, which is the very procedural guide that this very legislature uses on a daily basis. And most interestingly, as we watched how today's meeting opened up, the procedures that you used to move us into this agenda are laid out in Mason's Manual of Legislative Procedure. Lastly, is going beyond the scope of the resolutions. There are numerous control measures to prevent this. First, the resolution itself restricts the topics and points of debate. Congress itself is a natural adversary to a convention of the states, and the easiest way to invalidate that convention is for violating the scope that is written into the resolutions. Next, the states would be required to produce a commission for their commissioners, articulating their restrictions, their limitations on their commission, and as well cause for a recall. And then lastly, penalizing the commissioners for attempts to go beyond their scope or otherwise undermine the purposes of the convention. Several other states have implemented civil and/or criminal penalties for violating their commission, and I would recommend that Rhode Island implement very similar, stringent penalties. The last thing that I want to say before I answer your questions, assuming that you have them, is that I want to emphasize that the ratification process remains unchanged, regardless of whether the U.S. Congress started a convention or the states started a convention. Ultimately, the states have the final say as to yes or no on each individual proposal. With that, I'm happy, rather, I'm ecstatic to answer any of your questions.
And so that that final say would be ratification from 38 out of 50 states, correct?
That is correct. The bar to call, or the number to call a convention to begin with, the Constitution says two-thirds. As of right now, that's 34 states. For ratification, it's three-quarters. As of right now, that's 38 states. And then this actually dovetails into what I call Ross's reverse math. So if you need 38 states in order to ratify, that means you can only risk losing 12. If you get that 13th state, that's it, it's done. That proposal, just, it's like a, it's in the breeze.
And how many states have already passed a resolution substantially similar to this?
As of right now, there are 19 states that have passed, and I say this using the first portion, the call, citing the same three topics, there are 19 states that have used the exact same language.
Any questions for Mr. Mar from the committee? Representative Stewart?
Thank you for your testimony. I have one question that I was hoping you could help with.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not sure about this. Now, there are two pathways, right, for proposals for changes to the U.S. Constitution. Either initiate the proposal through Congress, or it could be initiated through the states. Is that right?
Let me just twist that just a little bit.
Okay.
So if two-thirds of the Congress vote to have a convention, then they can.
Okay, yep.
If two-thirds of the states pass, make application is the phrase that is actually used in the Constitution. If two-thirds of the states make application citing the same topics, then they can.
And I guess, over the history of our Constitution and use, has it, has it ever begun with the states?
Has it ever happened?
Yeah. I'm not aware that it has.
I'm going to answer your question in two ways. So the closest that we have ever gotten, without getting into another topic, the closest that we ever gotten resulted in the direct election of U.S. senators. Say, somewhere in the, of course, now I'm trying to remember specific dates, but somewhere in the very early 1900s, the Senate was having problems with governors not filling vacancies, to be frank. And so that was the impetus for the states moving towards this process. Now, at that time, Hawaii certainly wasn't a state, so the numbers were a little bit different. But that is now the reason why we have direct election of U.S. senators. And there was a second way I was going to answer that question, and apparently I need to start taking Prevegin, because I can't remember.
Okay. So just to follow up on, if I may?
Prevegin, does it work? Okay.
That, that part of the, the sort of like, a concern about what might be unleashed, if it begins with the, with the states, I guess for lack of a better way of putting it, is because it hasn't, kind of, we don't, we don't know, right? Because we don't have, apart from the situation that you described, which was almost it, but not quite it, we don't know.
Well, so what actually ended up happening in that case is, frankly, the Congress didn't want to be embarrassed that the states were going to do this, and so then two-thirds of the Congress stepped up and voted, and that's why they had a convention that resulted in the Seventeenth Amendment. That was actually the second part.
Okay.
If I could ask you a question, you use the term unleash. Could you take that one step farther to help me better understand what you mean by that?
Well, I thought, I couldn't remember your language, but I, I thought you were referring to, for example, something that, I don't have one of the written pieces of written testimony on the bill, but, for example, I was reading something from, from John Marion, who is just here, and the language seemed to suggest, and I'm paraphrasing, that sort of, once you initiate this thing and you have the convention, like you don't, like, like how can you have parameters on what ends up?
I am so glad that you asked, because now I actually remembered the real second answer.
Okay.
So if you were to make a note?
So that's why I use unleash, because it seemed like there was a lot of uncertainty about like, what could hap, you know?
So that's not a factual statement in the sense that the resolution by default cites three topics. That is the scope of the convention, and anything beyond that scope is just cause for the Congress to step in and completely invalidate the entire effort. So you can imagine yourself as a commissioner to said convention, and especially if you have penalties that you might face back at your home state for going beyond the scope, this is something that you're going to be somewhat keen to. As well, everybody else who's participating in the convention is also very keen to it and doesn't want to ruin the entire effort. We've been at this for more than 10 years, and who knows how much longer it'll take to actually happen. So the leadership of the convention, the committee chairs, the subcommittee chairs, and everyone involved is going to be almost hyper-concerned about going beyond their allowable scope. The next thing that I would add too is, and this would just be something I would ask that maybe you look into at a later time, there is a website that is called Article V Library, ArticleVLibrary.org. And on there, you'll find nearly 400 examples of the states trying to initiate this process on a wide variety of topics. So for people to say that this has never happened, yes, the convention itself has never happened, to say that the states have never tried to initiate this process is just, it's not factual.
Thank you. I find this fascinating, so thank you.
I'd love to follow up with you.
Okay.
Thank you. Sir?
Any further questions from the committee? All right, I have a question. Assuming we get to enough states that pass a resolution, what would the next step be in calling for the convention? How would that work?
The, the way that the Constitution words it is, the Congress has the duty, if you will, we'll call it a ministerial duty, to make the call. I think what you'll find as you look into this is that the communication methods over the course of the decades between the individual states and the Congress, the tracking mechanisms are severely lacking. And so arguably, there's a lack of information and awareness on the part of the Congress as to what the actions that the states have had. But Congress has a ministerial duty to call the time and the place of the convention.
Has that ever come up as an issue?
It, well, it hasn't come up as an issue yet because one of these conventions has never actually happened. So we've, we've never crossed that particular bridge. But the Constitution is clear. It starts off, "The Congress shall," then it talks about Congress's ability to initiate, and then it talks about the state's ability to initiate, and then the rest of the sentence continues on. So their duty is very ministerial at best. Otherwise, this is a completely straight, state-driven process.
Any further questions or comments from Mr. Mar? Thank you very much, I appreciate your testimony. We do have several other witnesses signed up, starting with Barbara Lardner and Dr. Welcome and thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Representatives Shanley. I'm here to support H.R. 5385. Up until 1913, the American people had direct veto power against suspending policies of the U.S. government, because in order to borrow money, the government had to go to the people. They had to sell us bonds. If you didn't want to go to war or support a federal pork project, you didn't buy the bonds. It was a simple system where Americans had economic veto power. It's also why government managed to stay small. The government didn't have an unlimited credit line to go on shopping sprees and make us pay for it. You just didn't buy the bonds. Then in 1913, the Federal Reserve Act created an unlimited credit line for the U.S. government to borrow directly from the Federal Reserve Bank and obligated us to pay it back, completely bypassing what was our veto power. They no longer needed to come to us directly to fund something. Ever since, Congress has had no desire to rein in their wasteful spending habits. Now, 112 years later, we are $36 trillion in debt. Congress created this fiscal time bomb, which will grow with each passing year. Congress is now in need of fiscal restraints. Congress needs to reform its fiscal policies, and we need to demand long-term solutions. Sadly, Congress doesn't have the will to change any of this. Fortunately, the writers of the Constitution had the foresight to provide a solution if we ever came to a time when Congress became ineffective, unresponsive, and refused to act in our best interest. A $36 trillion debt is not in our or future generations' best interests. The solution is Article V. How is Article V the solution and the path forward? Article V provides two ways to propose a constitutional amendment. It gives the authority to Congress and to the states. Many of the framers were state legislators, and they understood that states needed a check against an out-of-control, overreaching, and overspending Congress. The framers made you, the state legislators, our protectors. You can control the entire process. Article V enables you to reclaim the people's power. I know this body understands the value of Article V. As in 2016, the Rhode Island House of Representatives proposed a Convention of States, and 59 Rhode Island state representatives voted yea on House Resolution H. 7670. And I'll quote from the, the resolution, "To petition the U.S. Congress to call a convention for proposing amendments to the Constitution of the United States of America," unquote. So I'm asking you again to perform this task that you have been given the authority to do. Call an Article V Convention of States so we can propose an amendment to impose fiscal restraints on Congress. Please support 5385. We need to leave behind an inheritance, not a debt, to those who follow behind us.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Any questions from members of the committee? Dr. Victoria, welcome. I want to just make sure that red button is up so everyone can hear you. It's counterintuitive, yeah.
I tried to use my tone of voice as a teacher, but I'm a whisperer, so, thank you very much for having me today. And I'm not prepared like Barbara, because I come from Vietnam, and I come here when I was 17, and I learned English, and I went to college. And I'm not very good with politics, like political science is not my favorite subject. But finally, I just realized during the COVID-19 that my human rights are like not really much, like, until like my vote is not really have a value. And when I understand about the conventional state, I kind of tried to understand the Congress because I know that the federal and the state, my thinking is like, if you roll a bicycle, you have the two will to, to, to make the whole thing work, right? And as a citizen, what is our value in the voting? You are the one who represented us. You are the one who will need to know what to decide is good for us, right? The federal is just like kind of a big frame that will help that happen. But so far, in the past 10 years that I have been witness, like, the Congress never passed the budgets? And I say, what does that mean? How has it attacked me as a citizen? But as a fact, the whole population of America, right? So come back to why I support. I want the state have the power, and you guys have the power to help us to have a better life, the survival of the Camero genocide. I know that when you powerless, when nobody represented you, nobody's like kind of protected you, everybody ignore you. So lie and death, at that moment, you will know that your vote, your representative, the person who in your state is the savior for your thing. So conventional state, like, like earlier about his plan, the Constitution is there to protect us, not there to harm us. But most of us think, like, when we amended it, we will like unleash some power, a monster out? No, we already know that. Everything is implied, right? We have three parts of government, there's not just one. If you want to do something, mess up, how much more mess up you can be. Since the last time when you hear the Congress pass a budget, they haven't. The, the, the money is down there, and whatever happened, I think that's come to reality that as a citizen, as a resident of Rhode Island, I think we should pass the resolution and be part of it, and the courage enough to protect your own people, your own resident. And I'm happy to live in Rhode Island. I think I'm very proud to be here. I moved here eight years ago from California, and then I served in the military, I'm a veteran, and I live in Arizona. And I know, been moving around a lot, so I closely know what the issue with the federal. But I'm happy, like, at local level, and I, I love that Rhode Island is small enough, but we almost know each other, like, I met you, I met a lot of people, and I was like, hey, that's not too bad. I, I grew up from California, I don't know a lot of people. But thank you for listening, and if you have any question about my testimony, it's like very scattering. I really appreciate that you listened to me, just like, I, I don't want to lose that feeling that I have nobody to ask for or to support me in the moment of like terror, you know, and then whatever situation that we're in.
Well, thank you for your service and thank you for your testimony. We're glad you're here. Any questions from members of the committee? No questions. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Next witnesses we have are Jennifer Rice and Peter Chafee, and I can't make out the rest of the last name.
Hard Jr.
Okay, welcome.
I'll go first, Peter?
I'll be honored.
Testing, you hear me? Good, thank you.
Excellent.
One thing concerned, I've heard about way back in the freshman college, you get a constitutional convention, you may become a wrecking crane in the Constitution. And I'm thankful for the good training I received in the convention, the state's organization on that, as, after watching training videos. And an issue that sticks in my mind that, you know, it's hard to get like 38 states to agree on anything. I remember the Equal Rights Amendment, at first, 35 states ratified one right after the other, like a bunch of dominos, and then it stopped. And then the proponents who were in favor decided to extend the ratifying deadline, move it out, and it still got stuck. And, and it did not pass. And of course, if you're worried about a runaway convention, is a runaway Congress okay? Is a runaway Senate okay? Is a runaway agency's okay? I mean, if you can runaway government, I mean, I had some firsthand experience, Internal Revenue Service sent me a presentment, and I asked, you know, what statute makes me liable? And then I think I got some report back, well, some sections of Internal Revenue Code, well, I hope this helps, but no stipulation that these statutes make, that would make me liable. Then I paid a visit to the Law Library, and I opened up a code book, and they have a list of codes that have made positive law, you know, my asterisk, and in Title 26, Internal Revenue Code, was not on the list. And I looked up the definition of statute, Constitution, passed law, and I wrote back and went back and forth, and finally got a notice of intent levy, and, and I, one thing, and I didn't want a bunch of fines and penalties, and what, like, what, three times as much as I wanted. And then something I heard about in those proof of claim, so I found out on the internet where an agent has to declare on a penalty of perjury, and of course, I got the presentments, like, I disagree, go to some taxpayer advocate, so I supplied that, some other additional information, also a transcript of my day in tax court. I had to either complete the proof of claim or adjust my account. Well, fortunately, I guess the statute limitation 10 years passed, and I never heard from the IRS again, and that goes back to 2017. Yes, runaway government can be a problem, and, and hopefully, of course, having, reining in jurisdictional governance, having control and spending, and also term limits, I think, with a constitutional amendment is a good thing, and I agree with Thomas Jefferson and Kentucky and Virginia resolutions, let no more heard, be heard about trust in men, but ran with bind them from mischief by the chains of the Constitution. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, excellent.
Well, I'll take no news, that's good news.
All right, Jennifer, you have the floor.
Hi, Chairman Stanley, thank you, and for our two cosponsors, thanks for that last-minute change. I'm going to be brief. You've heard everything about how the, how, how the Convention of States gets called and what happens after. This is a very bold request. We're basically saying, hey, us down here, those states who have been taking orders from federal, we actually have a seat at the table about how you operate. And I just want to remind us all that Rhode Island's a pretty bold state. Our founder, good old, sorry, Roger Williams, who championed religious freedom, when the Rhode Island Assembly was first called, we were the first locality to ever have self-government in, at the, at the time in the world. And so I want Rhode Island to have a seat at the table for this first Convention of States. So I'm just calling on you guys to have courage, and a yes vote on this will actually wake up and educate all the citizenry of our great nation about what Convention of States is and that the states do have a balance, a, a role to play in the check and balances on the federal government. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony and for speaking from the heart. Any questions in the committee? Seeing none. We now have Dave Wilder and Haley Shaw. Welcome and thank you for your patience.
Oh, thank you for your patience.
Oh, thank you for your patience. Okay, so my, I'm Dave Wilder. I'm from Massachusetts, so you're very gracious to allow this interloper to speak. But I have some things to pass along, I think would be helpful. I'm sure you're all aware of the polling data. What Doge is doing in the bloated D.C. bureaucracy is very popular. Citizens everywhere are worried about their own budgets while increasingly angry with the wasteful spending of their tax dollars. This is nothing new, right? Career D.C. politicians somehow accumulate wealth well beyond their salaries. They press us to do more and more with less and less, yet we see no sacrifice from them. The time seems right ripe to take a stand for the citizens in your districts. Stand with them to bring some balance back in government. Rhode Island voices need to be the loudest voice in determining what happens in Rhode Island. As a volunteer regional captain for C.O.S.A. in Massachusetts, I've seen some changes caused by this growing sentiment. Last election, you may have recall, in Massachusetts, over seventy percent of the voters asked are validated the proposition that the executive branch of our state can audit the legislative branch. We clamor for transparency and responsibility. I also would like to extend to you the invitation that was in the Massachusetts Citizens Commission Report of two thousand and nineteen, and I have a reference for that for the clerk. It recommends that states come together for a limited Convention of States to fix problems that Congress will never do. So your neighbor Massachusetts has already approved this process. That commission, whose members were selected from the top elected state officials, spent a year hearing testimony and doing exhaustive research into the whole Article Five process. They concluded it is legal, safe, and a well-controlled process to propose amendments. It is simply a conversation to propose fixes to a broke system in Washington. Rhode Island should be part of that conversation. I respectfully request your support for the C.O.S. resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the committee?
I'll just take the hard ones.
Just take the hard ones?
Yeah.
Where does this, where does this stand in Massachusetts?
So we passed, the last last session, we passed both committees, and it did not get a House vote. And we're gonna go there again.
Good luck. All right, welcome.
Okay, my turn?
Yes.
All right, let me get a little closer here to this microphone. My name's Haley Shaw. I'm the Regional Director for Convention of States, so I oversee all of the states in New England and New York, and I work for Convention of States. I just wanted to clarify on a couple of things in case some of you maybe didn't understand it exactly. Article Five gives two ways to propose amendments. So all Article Five is, is it's the part of the Constitution that talks about amending the Constitution. The first is Congress, so both bodies propose an amendment, and then that has to be ratified by thirty-eight states. That's the only way we've done this so far. So all twenty-seven amendments that we have in our Constitution have been done that way. The other part, which is what we're talking about, is a Convention of States to propose amendments. And as we've mentioned, thirty-four states need to pass basically an agenda with the same topics. So our topics are term limits, fiscal restraints, and to reduce the size, scope, and jurisdiction of the federal government. Simply all that is, is it's a convention, or it's a conversation of all fifty states, separate of the federal government, to have a conversation and propose amendments. Whatever amendments are proposed from that convention still have to go out to be ratified by thirty-eight states. So it's a real uphill battle. And anything that comes out of it, and anything that's going to be ratified, has to be agreed on by thirty-eight states. That's a real challenge. So the idea of anything really radical coming out of that is really a difficult challenge. And so it's gonna be things, topics or amendments that have to be agreed on by the supermajority of the states. But what it really is, is it's a, it's a chance for the states to have a final check and balance on the federal government. And some stats I have for you is that sixty-eight percent of Americans back having a meeting of the states to propose these three topics. Seventy-one percent believe that additional limits on federal power are needed. Eighty-eight percent support term limits for career politicians. And this is my favorite one, fifty-nine percent trust you, state legislators, more than they trust Congress and the federal government. More people believe in you to be the voice of them. And that's what people are really asking for here, is for you to be the voice of Rhode Island in a larger conversation. What's also pretty amazing is it's one state, one vote. Rhode Island has an equal vote to Texas. Rhode Island has an equal vote to Florida. Really gives Rhode Island an amazing opportunity to have a large voice at a convention. And so I will just, lastly, I'll tell you, this group of people all behind me, they're volunteers. They spend a lot of time going out into neighborhoods and talking to people. One of the biggest things they did this year was stand outside of grocery stores, and you'd be amazed at just holding a sign that says term limits on Congress. We don't ask people what their political party is, but everyone comes up and says yes. And we know that Congress is never gonna give themselves term limits, but you guys can. And this is your opportunity to be the heroes of our amazing story that is American history. This is your chance right now to be those people to do that. So in wrapping this up, my request to you is to vote this out of the committee and give this a chance to be heard by the larger body of the Rhode Island House of Representatives, and let the people of Rhode Island, you know, really have a chance to hear what the whole body thinks about Convention of States and these proposals. So please support this, please pass this, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for your testimony and for getting to all the questions that people had over the course of the evening. Are there any questions from members of the committee? No, okay. Well, that will conclude the hearing unless there's anybody else in the audience that was not called that wants to testify. I think we got to everybody. So that, oh, there's one more. Just indicate your name, and you have the floor.
My name is Jennifer Curry. I came here expecting to testify on a bill that was not able to be testified on. But I hung out, I chatted with these guys, I actually lent someone a pen, and then we started talking, and I had not heard about this before. So when she just gave those stats of fifty-nine percent of people, I wasn't even included in that. I fully support this. I think this is a great. It's, I hadn't heard about before. So I think if more Rhode Islanders heard about this, more Rhode Islanders would be writing into their senators and their reps in support. Somehow, we need to get these guys on TV.
They're on TV right now.
Well, I mean, like, like, out there, on a billboard, on on more, on social media, you know, because I think a lot of people don't know about this.
Yeah.
That's it.
All right, thank you very much for your testimony. Okay, that will
I just want to say, I agree with
Representative Breen.
I agree wholeheartedly with you. If this was out there, this would be overwhelmingly, absolutely. So thank you. Thanks, everyone.
I think all of us, every year since this has been introduced, have gotten more and more emails on the subject matter, so your work getting the word out is going somewhere. All right, that will conclude our agenda for the evening. As well, is there a motion to adjourn?